All right, good evening. It's Wednesday, May fifteenth, 2024. Time is 6:30 PM. Before we stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and a local cable station. If you could join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We start tonight's agenda with a vote to verify Mary, is it Leon, Loan?
Loan.
Loan? There we go. Employment as the Principal Secretary for the Assessing Department. Greetings.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you, um, do you have a, put you on the spot here, but like a two-minute intro?
It could be thirty seconds, doesn't it?
It could be thirty seconds. I currently work for the school department at the Rozelle, but I've had many years of administrative experience prior to working at the schools and being a mother. And I'm looking forward to starting here and getting to know everyone.
Awesome. Any questions from the board?
No, no questions. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to ratify Mary Loan's, Loans?
No.
Mary Loan, employment as Principal Secretary for the Assessing Department.
Second.
I vote in favor.
Aye.
All right. Mary Lo, congratulations.
Thank you.
And sorry to have a four-letter word, have, have been able to come so many, so many different ways, get confused.
I always said, like, Lone Ranger, but people don't really get that anymore.
No, few of us do, unfortunately. Not as many as before. But welcome. We're excited to have you, and I'm sure they're excited to have you downstairs, too. So Linda, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Super.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night. Next on the agenda is to award a contract to S&amp;M Painting for ADA accessibility improvements. Marcy, here to say anything about this?
Um, yeah, sure. So S&amp;M, S&amp;M Painting was actually the same contractor that did the work in the building department over here. They ended up coming in, you know, as the lowest bid for this project. They're doing some ADA accessibility improvements at the water department and the DPW building. My understanding, it should only take a couple of weeks, and he is going to be able to start almost immediately, so.
Awesome.
And also, just to add, this is being paid for 100% through a grant, thank you, to Marcy and the ADA Committee for securing it. So it will not cost the town any money?
I was gonna throw that in. That's why I throw it to Marcy again.
Yeah, sorry about that.
All good.
But yet, no, they did a good job, secured the money, and so we'll be able to make some improvements to those respective buildings.
Yep. So, no, thank you. Uh, any further discussion?
Which buildings are they? The water department?
And the DPW building.
Placing the concrete, putting ramps up, right?
Yeah, and some of the counters are a little too high, so they're bringing down some of the counters, replacing some of the, you know, storage that they have, yeah.
Do you want to make this motion?
All right. I make a motion to award the contract to S&amp;M Painting for the ADA accessibility improvements.
I'll second.
Vote yes.
Yes.
Super. Moving along, next is to vote to award, revise, uh, contract, the contract for the town's website. So I will, this was me, I guess, to talk, although both of, both of you were on the, on the committee and left for the same reason, and that's joining this board. But the communication, I was gonna say conservation, Communication Committee met, interviewed, you know, demoed out a bunch of different, a bunch of different vendors, and we settled on revise. Revise is our current provider, albeit our website is about ten years old and lacks some functionality that you find in a lot of websites today, i.e. the ability to push notifications to people, uh, the ability to put more than one, you know, notice up at a time, things like that. So revised met the, met the requirements and came in at a significantly lower price than anybody else, due in large part to the fact that it wasn't starting from scratch, it was more converting. So, um, we will move forward with this, or if the board chooses, we will move forward with this. And if I had to guess, four, five, six months from now, we should have something to show, if not maybe a little shorter.
You know, and if you don't mind, I'd like to add, just because I want to give credit where credit is due, Jeff did an excellent job meeting with all the different vendors, because we met with more than a half a dozen. But although revised was the lowest bid out of everybody, Jeff still went back to them and through negotiations saved a couple of grand more. So again, thank you for that.
Yeah. I'll part of the deal. So, any, any further discussion?
Oh, I'm ready to make a motion. Make a motion, award revised contract for town's website.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Uh, next up, approve the meeting minutes for April seventeenth.
I make a motion, approve the meeting minutes for April seventeen, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, accept the meeting minutes for May first, 2024.
I make a motion, accept the meeting minutes of May first, 2024, for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have two, one at a time, but two site plan review recommendations for the ZBA. Uh, the first is at three seventy-three Crescent Street, Unit thirteen, and it's a proposed garage repair shop.
Yep. So, um, so I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. It's where Crescent Street and West Street kind of meet. Um, there is, although it's in a residential area, it's a pre-existing non-conforming area. There are a handful of commercial entities that are in there. One of them, Garage Thirteen, which means that there's at least thirteen garages. But there's quite a few garages, and so they're just looking to do, you know, a garage repair shop in there. I will note that this will require a special permit before the ZBA, and it will also require site plan approval through the planning board, because it is in our Water Resource Protection District. And this is exactly where we went to town meeting to streamline. So once the Attorney General's Office approves that change, it will only go before one board in the future. At this point, it won't go before both, but because it's in allowed use in our zoning, it, um, besides making sure they're complying, uh, it's fairly a perfunctory review.
Yeah. So my thoughts on this, um, that area's packed, it's crowded. This is not a hardship-type thing. Um, it's just, it's in the water resource, it's, it's not really built for it. To me, it's a no. Um, I don't think it's needed there, you know, that, all those, all those units look rented, there's certainly, as you look in this photo, you know, I looked at it today, um, there are additional, like, temporary shelters or, you know, large tents, if you will, in the back of it. Um, and there's, there's just a lot of business in there. And I don't, I don't think it does anybody any justice putting a, you know, a garage in there with, with just oil and liquids and hazards that, that come with it, and the noise that comes with it, again, in a residential area. So, um, I'm not next to it, but I'm not that far from it. I just, I don't think it's needed.
What, what's in there now?
Right now, the unit is not being used.
Okay.
To the left and right, there's, the whole thing's empty?
No, no, just Unit thirteen. Almost all the other ones are, most of them are contractor storage yards or already other repair shops of some kind.
So there are already a bunch of repair shops in there?
Yes.
Not, uh, not garages, though, right?
Um, I think it's a hodgepodge of a whole bunch of mechanical repair items that are in there at this point, and, um...
Because from what I understand, and, and I could be wrong, there's no commercial garage in there. There might be some repairs for the, the trucks and the vehicles that of the, you know, there's companies in there, uh, that might have ten, fifteen vehicles, and there's repair in those.
Well, that could be, I will tell you this, because this is a garage repair shop, it will come back before the Board of Selectment at a later date to get licensed after it's been approved at that level. Um, to my knowledge, off the top of my head, we don't have a traditional garage repair shop that's in there, but to Jeff's point, there are vehicles being worked on. Because if you work on your own fleet of vehicles, like, for example, JP Newton, they don't have to get a garage repair shop because they're working on their own cars. So I do know that there is commercial work being done in that facility as a whole, specific to Unit thirteen. Um, the truth of the matter is that they were doing work there, it came to our attention, uh, and so we issued a cease and desist letter, and once they recognized that they needed the, the, um, the permit, they did stop the work, they did hire an attorney, they are following the process. So that's where we are today.
So I did see that it says that they have no plans to store any heavy equipment, tires, or chemicals at that location, right?
I saw the same.
Okay.
So again, hopefully when the ZBA issues its permit, because that is already part of the narrative, they should be including that as part of the narrative, so that way it prevents them from doing it at a future date. And if you would like, we can capture that in the board's comments to make sure that you, that the ZBA stipulates to that, if you prefer.
Could you repeat that?
Sure. So what Marcy was referring to is the fact that they said, they, they stated that they would not be storing toxic materials, tires, and a couple of other items. So that's their narrative, that's their proposal. The ZBA, if they just issue a permit, and they are silent on that, at a later date, they could just choose to store those materials. Because although they had a narrative, they could, they operate under the issuance of the permit. So what I'm suggesting is, is that if the board is concerned about those items, even though it's in the narrative, is that we could ask the ZBA to specify that those items of that narrative be included in the permit, so at a later date, they don't attempt to store those materials.
Yeah. I just go back, like, the facility's not that old. If it was rented, with the, if the, who, the owner, landlord, whatever you want to call it, rented it to somebody knowing that it was gonna be a garage, and they were letting it go, we shouldn't reward it and allow it to be a garage. I just, no. Like, it, it's just giving them what they want, outside of the, outside of the confines of, of how the zoning currently is. The person who rented to them should have known better at the time. So.
So can I ask you a question on that, though?
Mr. Crockett, may I speak?
So, the very last unit in that complex, because I actually looked at rented some space there myself, and we're talking about toxic stuff. If you drive to the back of that property, you're gonna encounter thousands of tires. There's a tire shop in the very last bay there. So if we're not gonna allow this business to go in there, does the town have some sort of code enforcement officer to address all of the tires that they have sitting outside?
Yeah, we'd have to specifically look, a couple, a couple of things, just first, we're only making a recommendation that goes to the ZBA. ZBA's gonna do what they're gonna do. Um, but, um, or, you know, the building inspector is the person that would, uh, would look at that, so we can maybe, I beg, get a better understanding of that and see what's there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what I'll do is I'll forward him the, the information. So I use the word hodgepodge, because that's exactly what this property is.
Yes.
And so I don't have any information available to be able to speak with authority on this, either one. It's an illegal use, that there is that storage of tires that nobody's aware of and enforcement had needed.
Actually, you can see it right on the bottom of the picture, right under where it says page thirty of forty-seven, "Top Notch Tires."
I was gonna say, or there is a contractor's yard that's already permitted, and part of their job is storing tires. If so, then we're being allowed use.
Yep.
Because we do know contractor's yards aren't allowed use here. I just don't know, I'm not readily available to that information, whether or not there is a permit. But to, um, to Al's point, where it says "top-notch tires," chances are it's an established business, probably operating into a permit.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily in favor of rewarding bad behavior either. I mean, if you're operating illegally, um...
Yeah, but it looks like he's...
But they are going through the process. They, you did say he stopped immediately, got an attorney, he's going through the process.
Yeah, he's trying to do the right thing, from what I'm reading. Right?
That's correct. So our bylaw prohibits somebody that while they're under an active cease and desist, and if they are continuing to violate that cease and desist, they cannot even entertain the permitting process. So the fact that they are going forward in the permitting process is indicative of the fact that they stopped and are now following the rules.
Yeah, I don't, I don't particularly see a problem. Somebody's doing the wrong thing, sometimes you don't know you're doing the wrong thing. You change your, your scope, and you adjust, and you make it right. So I don't want to tell somebody that's running a business, trying to run a business, that they need to stop. And at the beginning of any business, it's gonna be a little bit difficult, and you're gonna run into some roadblocks. This is a roadblock. Trying to look at the American dream.
Yeah. Again, I'm just, I'm not a fan of it being in the water resource area, and just not a fan, for the oil, for whatever, repairs, repair.
That's my question, though. I mean, it states that they do tune-ups and brakes. I mean, that, that includes chemicals then, doesn't it?
Probably in large part.
Is it just me? I mean, that's oil, that's brake fluid, that's, there's, there's chemicals.
So storing of chemicals has to be over a hundred and sixteen gallons?
To technically be storing chemicals?
Right. If I'm not mistaken, it's, it's something like that. It's a hundred and sixteen or one fifteen. Um, so that could be the, when you look at the letter of the law or the, the rule, um, it's, it's quantified by gallons. Storing a couple of containers or quarts of oil, at the end of the day, it's not gonna, I mean, we probably all have some in our garage right now at home.
So, so what, what can we do here? I know we're making recommendations, but what, what is, we're just making recommendations?
We can recommend, you know, we can recommend that the ZBA proceed with it, we can recommend that, um, or we can not recommend it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, having only been here for a year, I know sometimes we've aligned with the ZBA, and sometimes we haven't.
Yeah. So Marcy, just so you're aware, from a process standpoint, you have a town bylaw that whenever there is a site plan review, it triggers notification to seventeen boards and committees. You probably saw that on the ADA. And so that's what we're doing here. There is no mass general law that requires this. This is a local, um, cultural, um, aspect that we do. So, um, so that's what you're doing now, is that you'll, you'll review it, you make whatever recommendations you want. Christine then puts it, that puts it into a memo, I'll sign it, we send off to the respective board, and the board can choose it to take into advisement or not.
So let me try. Sounds like two people are willing to have it moved forward, and I'll, I'll be the one that thinks it's just a bad idea and shouldn't happen. I don't know if that would be our, our fair recommendation. I don't want to speak for the other one here, but that's what I'm hearing.
As long as we include...
As long, like, to, to, to finish what you're gonna say, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I think, I'm in favor, as long as they pass everything that's required by the state and by, you know, whatever zoning regulations, uh, I'm in favor of it. I mean, their hours seem to be from seven AM to six, eight to five, which I don't believe are gonna fall outside of a window. Um, they're, they're, they're setting their own parameters. So I, I, I'm, as long as it passes all the other inspections, I'm okay with this. People need to make a living.
Can you make sense of that, Christine?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we will, if we're good, you good?
Good.
We will move on to the second site plan review. Um, this is at four forty West Center Street, and this is a proposed car wash. Um, I will start the conversation with a no, again.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, again, a recommended no, albeit, um, this could not be in a worse spot. Um, this is almost directly across from, uh...
West Street.
From West Street. And, you know, we, that couldn't be more congested to begin with. Um, you know, absorbing the, the traffic, and albeit Market Basket's gonna have more traffic, but it takes one oh six, like, so much just to absorb that Market Basket traffic, and, and putting this in between is, is just an absolute disaster.
There's also gonna be a light going in over at Lincoln, so there, there's gonna be a little bit of a backup, probably, with traffic going that way. Before the meeting, though, I did have an opportunity to meet with Tracy, and she did, we did discuss this, and she did say that there is, um, a right turn only sign that would be going in, that I think would help. I mean, um, you know, because taking a left turn out of there would be virtually impossible, you know, for most of the day. Um, but if there's a right turn only sign, I think that's helpful. But I, I do agree, it's not an ideal location for something like that. Um, but, I mean, I can't think of any other reason to say no. I, you know, I mean, I don't think it's a great location, but the right turn only sign was a big deal for me.
Yeah. I'm all for a car wash in town, but...
Same, yeah.
There's, this could, this is, on the top of the places I would least recommend it be done.
Kind of a wet area, isn't it?
Well...
Isn't that kind of wetland stuff?
There's two houses there that would come down, and they'd be going in that area.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I was also unclear about that, but those two houses would come down, and that's where it would go.
They're gonna be on groundwater?
That's what my next thing was, and my concern is water.
They say...
Yeah, it says it, the narrative says that they'll use domestic water, so they'll be using their local water.
Yeah. And they do recycle it.
Yeah, they, they, they say they'll use their own water and recycling water. And Al, you could see all the dots there, that's where the wetland, the park area is.
Yeah. So again, my recommendation, between traffic and water, is it, is it no? Right? I don't know about the board.
I would agree with that one. I think there could be a better location. It's, it's, it's gonna be really congested there soon, with Lincoln Street and all of the construction that's gonna be going on there, and then that light that's going in on the left up there, that's gonna be, that's gonna be terrible.
I would be more inclined, I know this isn't, isn't a choice, but I would be more inclined to review this after the light went in, after we understood the traffic pattern better, and after we understood what's going on. I know we're not given that choice right now.
No, I agree.
And because we're not given that choice right now, my vote would be no.
I agree, it would be better to see what it's gonna look like when everything else is done.
But I can't right now. I, I come out of West Street every day, and it's, it's important.
Yeah. I refuse to come out of West Street ever.
Mike, you're studying plans over there.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I always struggle with people in businesses, because that, that brings in more jobs to town. It brings in, you know, it just brings in different things to town, and, and I'd love to see, you know, some of the empty spaces be used and utilized as opposed to remain empty, and, and, you know, I'd love to see things freshened up a little bit, if you will. Um, so that's kind of where my, my mind is. Um, but I think that, to your point, if we had a better understanding of what the flow is gonna be, because we could be looking at this one way, and they could have a different plan in place already for flow, with an entrance one way and exit, you know, which would improve the, the congestion. Um...
Yeah, I don't, you know, coming out of West Street enough, onto West Center, on a one oh six, it is in the morning...
Well, the whole thing in the morning.
Just, just the most uncomfortable thing you can do is make a left-hand turn there.
Yeah, but they're not gonna be washing cars probably at seven AM when you go to work, or when people, when the traffic's...
We don't know.
Well, the hours of operation are seven to eight, so they could be.
You know, it's just, just another factor of, of either one vehicle to try to figure out what direction that one's going in. Like I said, without better understanding a future traffic pattern or what the light does.
What was there before?
There's two houses.
There's two houses right there.
So, I'm a no. I'll, I'll stop talking, because you know where I am.
Yeah.
But, um...
I just can't vision the exact spot.
Is there a picture?
I think it's a yellow house and a red house in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, no, there's no street.
Oh, there's no picture. I'll try that. So I was flipping, I was like, flip left, flip right. I didn't see any pictures.
Yeah, it's two relatively modest-sized houses that are sitting on lots. It's actually a lot more lot than house, in both cases.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but, um, zoning goes over the, the traffic flow, and they go into, they, they look in those things?
They will, and they're, as part of the narrative, they have submitted a current traffic analysis for a study. So they'll require that, but they've already actually done one. They're, they're projecting, they're projecting on sixty-one cars per day, I'm sorry, sixty-one trips per day during the weekdays and a hundred and thirty-one on weekends. And a trip means one is in, one is out. So basically, they're thinking they're gonna do about thirty cars a day during the week, and sixty-five to seventy cars on, on weekends. So their argument is, when you have thirty thousand cars traveling, thirty cars per day is not gonna have an impact on a percentage basis.
Yeah, until it's a snowy day and it's backed up onto one oh six, wiping the salt off. I'm, I'm just not, I, again, I don't know enough, but, no, I'm done. I said that twice, so I'm done talking. Whatever you want, whatever you want.
S- sounds like we're at a split decision.
Okay.
You're, you're, it's a board?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
So what I would recommend is, is that someone make a motion that you're in favor for the, with the following conditions, or you're in favor with no conditions, or you're against it, and we'll, whatever that vote is, we'll capture it.
So like, if I'm, if I'm, you're in favor of it?
As long as the zoning board does the required, the required inspections and the, the, the traffic flow, um, it's, it's impossible to predict how many cars are actually gonna go into a car wash. It could be three, it could be, I mean, if the business is a flop, it'll be a business and it'll be gone. You know what I mean? It, it's impossible to predict it. Um, my biggest concern is the water, that they're using their own water and not the town water. That's my biggest concern, through and through. Um, because, yes, do I think, do I, do I agree with them when they say thirty cars? Is it gonna make a huge impact on, on the traffic there? It's probably isn't, it's probably negligible, um, throughout the day. Um, so I'll go ahead and make a motion. Um, how do we make this motion? Since it's a...
But if you just make a recommendation, right?
Yeah, so if I think, in order to capture, I think that you're trying to say...
It's a recommendation.
Is that your, your motion would be that you would recommend approval of the project contingent on the fact that all zoning and all rules and regulations are followed.
Yeah, I'll make a motion based off what David just said.
I'm not seconding that one, Mike, I'm sorry.
You're good?
I won't second it, you then.
It's fine.
So the, then the, the minutes were, were captured, that a motion was made, uh, there was no second, therefore the motion failed. And it'll be whatever somebody else wants to make for a motion.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a broader motion that, that the, I don't know how we say it, but that the board is not in favor of this being built at this time, at that location.
Commending, not to recommend.
Okay.
Maybe second of them.
Yeah, second.
Two days, one day.
Finally got there. Took a year and wait.
There you go.
It's okay, it was the right time.
Yes, it was. God, it wasn't earlier. All right. Um, communication reports from boards of the town and officials, nothing listed. Uh, correspondence from the public to determine a course of action, again, nothing listed, public comment period. Mr. Al Crockett is in the, the audience?
Got nothing.
Got nothing. Great. You, um, before we get to Town Administrator's Report, I do want to thank David, um, at the town meeting, your presentation. Um, I received many, many comments saying that was good, very well done, very informative, very helpful. So I know that we were, you know, trying to decide if that was the right thing to do or not, but, uh, in my opinion, based on the feedback I got, it was. So I'll just say thanks, thank you for your efforts, and, and again, it seemed to be, provide some guidance.
Second that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have something from the Veterans Day Committee. Is it a good time to pass it now? I think we missed it in communication. Um, so, uh, historically, the Veterans Day on, from Memorial Day, the Boy Scouts have come out and put flags, and the Cub Scouts have come out and put flags over at Piney Hill. Um, we're gonna request some help from the residents in town this year to assist us on Thursday, the twenty-third, at, at five PM. I'm out, I'm out of town next week, so I will not be able to attend. Uh, but if anybody, um, that watches this at home would like to, uh, attend and would like to help out to put flags for Memorial Day, uh, please reach out to Annie. Town...
You said five PM?
Yeah, five, five, five PM, five thirty.
I'm sorry, I'm putting my calendar.
Yeah. I'll be out of town, so I won't make it.
That's right. You get a good reason to be out of town. So, David?
Thank you. So a handful of FYIs first is, is that we have a digitalization grant that we received from the state to digitalize our Board of Health records. We had hired a private vendor, they did most of the work, but there was still some cleaning up to do. So we were able to just hire basically a summer intern, um, as, um, to be able to do the cleanup. It'll cost us a little bit less money, and also at the same time pay for it out of a grant. So, we hired her, it'll just be a summer intern project, uh, for her. Uh, second is, is that our fire chief is a strong chief, so he has the right consultation with me to promote from within. Uh, and he is going to, is automate the announcement that we'd be promoting Adam Silva as our next lieutenant. That position has been vacant for some time, because we had, uh, promoted Lincoln, and we had never done anything else with a, with a lieutenant. So, Adam's excellent, he is, uh, a fantastic firefighter, he'll do a very good job. And in the spirit of what we've discussed and done in the past, is that we will have a full ceremony with family at a later date. And once we know that date, we'll pass it along. The third is, is a vote that I'll ask for the board. I am the procurement officer for the town, so I sign off in making sure that, to the best of our ability, that we follow our rules and laws, uh, in doing that. However, um, whenever we do purchase something, you'll see that at town meeting, we always say dispose of it in the best interest of the town. And the Board of Selectment are authorized to do that. When we don't have that vote at town meeting, I always ask this board to do it. So earlier in the winter, we had to purchase a new sander for one of our trucks, because the old one had rusted out. And it, when there's a hole in the bottom, it doesn't hold sand very well. So, um, so with that said, we purchased a new sander, um, and we're gonna dispose of the old one. So I'm just asking for a vote of the board to approve, um, disposing of that.
And, sorry, out of curiosity, where, um, if a resident wanted to see where these items were being disposed of and what the transactions would look like, is there any way to see those?
Yep, they could just contact our office. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we actually put, go out to bid. Um, we do an online auction. I think it's Missa Bid is the one we normally use. And that way, if somebody wants to bid on it, they can. I've had people contact me in the past and say, how do I bid on it? Cause I can't just sell it to them.
Right.
Um, and we allow those residents, and we've had residents in town bid on it and win them in the past. So, um, so yeah, they could just contact our office.
Okay.
You in the mood for a sander?
Yeah, no, um, not, not for, not for this. There's another vehicle that somebody asked me about, and I didn't, I didn't have the answer, and I said I'd get back to them, and now I forgot who it was, so I have to remember.
No, that's okay, just town contact.
Yeah. Um, but you need a motion for this?
Please.
Yeah, I make a motion, authorize disposal of twenty fifteen Torwell sander.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Third is just an update on municipal aggregation. I believe it was a board of two at that point, um, but I informed you that our contract is going to be expiring in November of this year. And so we go out to bid, we literally, there's a commodities market based in Chicago, and we have a consultant. We actually go out to bid and try to secure electric, uh, electric power on behalf of the town. It doesn't cost us anything, it's additional work that we do, but we feel that wherever we can save our residents some money, we, we will. And every quarter, and you'll be seeing it soon, it's every single quarter, as I always let the board know, how much our residents have saved. And you'll see this spike that happened last year in twenty twenty-three. National Grid was charging thirty-four cents per kilowatt, we were at eleven. And literally, our residents saved about two million dollars last year, because we gave them that option. You'll see that the spikes have come down, it's, they've moderated, but through November, we're still at eleven and a half cents, or eleven point three five cents, to be exact. And you can see on this graph, the National Grid, um, they're gonna be probably hovering somewhere around fourteen to fifteen. They're required by DPU, Department of Public Utilities, to bid twice a year. It's a poorly written rule, uh, rule and regulation. And what I mean by that is, is that National Grid has to announce, cause they have to get approval from DPU in advance as to what day they're gonna go to the market, and they have to purchase that day. So if I was a supplier of electricity, my pricing is gonna go up that day, knowing I have the biggest supplier of electricity in Massachusetts buying that day. Silly, but it is what it is. With that said, we are still saving money through November. I do need a couple of months of lead time. I've gone out to bid two times over the past month. I secured twelve and a half cents once and thirteen point three the other. We had said no at that point, because again, I didn't wanna see the price go, the price increase. And unfortunately, we are also facing some geopolitical issues on this issue as well. So, if you want more details, I'll get into it, but I am hoping that we're gonna start to see some softening in the price. Uh, and if so, then you had taken a vote about two months ago to give me the power to be able to immediately execute it, and then I can bring it back to the board for a full vote. So I'm still acting under that capacity, but we have not executed pricing, cause we're hoping to see some, a little bit of softness coming up. You know, if that's the case, then I'll bring it back. Unfortunately, based on the trend, it may not get back down to that eleven three five that we currently have, but it's an option. And if for whatever reason, we sign a contract that happens to be at, say, fourteen cents, and National Grid is gonna offer them thirteen, you have the option to go to thirteen cents at National Grid, doesn't cost you anything. So, it's just an extra option, just wanna let you know, we're working on it, we're still securing pricing. It's been a little bit volatile, and we're hoping it'll soften up. Pickleball courts.
Hmm.
They are ninety percent installed. If you go down, you'll see them, the, the pavement is done, there is, the walkway is done, some of the site work is still being worked on. Uh, and the fence has been installed as well, so it looks fantastic. So, um, so we'll be doing some painting as soon as all of that asphalt cures. And, um, and again, I also wanna say thank you, cause we have a local guy, Mark, uh, Mark McLeod out of Ramco's doing the work. They're doing a really good job, and, um, and so I, so I'll let you know the status of that.
Yeah, and I wanna add in there, I know there was curing time for the, uh, for the paint, and it was longer. While I don't remember the time when we went through the process, it was a lot longer than what, uh, what I wanted it to be. So, I guess to residents, you're gonna see it painted, but can't go on it yet. It's kinda like putting the toy out in front of the kid and not letting it play with it. Um, but I think that's what we're gonna have to do for a little bit to get, uh, I think the paint was like, it was fifteen, twenty days, thirty days. It was some amount of time to cure.
And it's also temperature...
Yeah.
Specific, so... However, I will add, we're using as much maroon as we can, the different colors. So, um, and we don't wanna see all the balls end up maroon at a later date, so you're right.
But, it's there.
It is.
We'll all go break an ankle sometimes, so...
Yeah, and I think it's, it's just one of those deliverables that, you know, we worked on for a handful of years, and we're showing residents that we're just trying to make the town and nicer, more comforting place for them, so... Uh, last is, is an FYI in the Community Safety Day. We do this every single year, police and fire do an excellent job. Go down there, there will be grilling, there'll be food, there'll be things for the kids, the, all the apparatus that's outside the building, so people can walk through it and see it. And also, we call this is the same date and time that we also do the River Walk on River Street. So we close it down, there'll be a train, uh, that is, is, um, will transport people from one place to the other. So hopefully, we have good weather, and, but it's an absolutely fantastic day, and it's great for our kids. And again, I think it's a, another item as to where we're trying to make our town stand out. And not on the agenda, but last note, I just wanna mention, our next meeting will be on June fifth. I say that because we always meet the first and third Wednesdays, unless we make a change. But May is three, uh, May is five weeks. So, it'll be three weeks between our next meeting. So, we get an extra week off. Um, but anyway, the next meeting will be on June fifth.
All right.
Great.
Any other discussion from the board?
No.
Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Second. Oh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are done. You are done, Mike.
You are.